Yeah, so I want them to measure it off in square inches. You've got the triangular one. She thinks she's like being nice to me by sliding that way, but really she's being nice to you. It's not normal to have only two. And each one only has one screen. Multiple monitors, multiple workstations. I have them, I don't multitask.
Good evening. I am bringing to order the board meeting dated Monday, May 20th, 2019. All board members are present except for Deana Mitchell, who is excused. Is she on the phone? Okay, thank you. And this is our last meeting for our students represent... Oh yeah, one more, sorry. I thought you told me this was gonna be last, never mind. Okay. Ms. Hildy, would you lead us in the flag salute, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And, second to the last time, would you read your opening statement, please?
We would like to welcome you to our board meeting and thank you for attending and supporting the work of the Anchorage School District and this board. The board thanks students, parents, teachers, staff, school business partners, and the entire community for your investment in our district with your time, your talent, and your tax dollars. If you are unable to be physically present for the entire meeting, you may choose to tune into the municipality of Anchorage's Channel 9 or YouTube to watch the live stream. Recordings of the meetings are also available through the agenda in Board Docs.
Thank you. At this time, the approval agenda, and I do have one change that will be on our non-action items. This was brought up in our planning and just inadvertently got missed from our non-action item, but it is a discussion on rejoining the Coalition of Education Equity. And do we have a memorandum number for that, or would we? Okay, okay, that's right. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any other changes or to the agenda as presented? Pardon?
Point of order, we failed to vote on amending the agenda.
Correct, thank you, Mr. Donnelly. So at this time, if board members would, as soon as it's ready?
It's funny, it's something that makes me like Max. So Max never does that. You might as well just excuse yourself.
So the motion passes, approval of the agenda passes five yeas to one day. At this time, do we have a report from our student advisory?
So we haven't had any more meetings this year. We'll start back up again in September, but just, I'll try and keep you guys posted. The person who is supposed to be our student representative, Baron, is currently unsure if he will be able to fulfill the position. It's a hard time commitment for his family, and so we're trying to see if there's a way that he can, and if not, hopefully train another person to be ready at the beginning of next school year.
Thank you. And I don't believe we had any committee reports since last board meeting. Is she on the phone yet? Okay, she is, okay. We do have our ad hoc committee.
Go ahead, Deana.
Yes.
Oh hey, this is Deana, I'm sorry, I have a pretty bad cold. So we did have a couple of meetings, one was the ad hoc committee on strategic planning, and that was a very preliminary meeting, but it was good because we talked about just generally what we think the scope of the committee should be. And so our next step is to figure out what our process will be and what outside resources we might want to have. My voice is so bad. What type of outside resources we might want to pull in, plus with that planning process. And we'll have something to present at the board retreat in June. And then the second committee, which I think is a spread agenda item, was the ad hoc committee on nutrition, wellness. Do you want me to wave on that, or should I?
No, that's next on the agenda.
Okay, so I'll hold off. Should I go ahead and go into that, or are there other committee reports? Okay, so we had our... Go ahead.
Yeah, we're gonna have a presentation on that, Deana, if you just wanna hold off.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
And are we ready to do that? Is the committee ready? Are you guys ready to come forward? Welcome, ladies.
Is there gonna be a timer?
We are gonna set it for 10 minutes.
It's not gonna show because it's gonna have your screen, so maybe Stark can, or I can, when it's, how much time?
When do you wanna notice?
When do you wanna notice?
Could you?
Seven, eight minutes, seven minutes?
Seven minutes? Yes, yeah, so we're gonna do seven tenths of this.
In 10 minutes, we're gonna take an exercise break.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, would you like, when you use hacker time, and then you'll know you have three and a half minutes left?
You could each do one minute.
Well, just because you might wanna finish up, it's seven minutes, the time's over, so usually five minutes.
If you wanna give me a five minute.
Okay, I'll do this.
Thank you.
The decision is the hardest part. Okay. Whenever you're ready.
Okay, great. So Ms. Mitchell asked us to update all of you with what we've been doing over the past few weeks, and we'll start with the background. Keri began saber rattling a while ago with some recess reductions at Sand Lake. We convened with other parents around the district over the fall. We've met with teachers and specialists, medical specialists, all around the city. We presented you with student and medical professional testimonies and parent testimonies in January. We have something like 6,000 signatures overall on this petition that was created, somewhere around a third or half are from Anchorage proper, distributed across the city. And we have attempted to contact as many teachers as possible, which with our limited scope is, you know, maybe in the realm of like 80 some odd teachers, but at least that's something. Next slide. Okay, so some of the reasons that petition signers said that they cared about this issue, they were concerned about the time to practice the SEL skills that come with recess and lunch. They're concerned about having inadequate nutrition, maybe not being able to feel comfortable within social structures of the lunchroom situation. There are medical professionals who are deeply concerned about lifelong results of inadequate nutrition and bad eating behaviors. People want to update things to be more reflective of CDC policy. I was really struck by the comment of Rebecca B. from Chugiak, who said, "My child will not attend ASD schools without this change." We have something like 22 or 23 pages of comments. And this is a sample slide from our teacher survey that shows something like 80 some odd percent or 90% of the teachers who responded to our survey are showing that they're, the last student in the lunch line is getting less, too significantly less, time than the CDC requires or gives guidelines for adequate eating. So you guys created unanimously a charter in February to explore the potential changes to the way time is allocated in the system for recess, lunch, physical education, and physical activities between and within instructional blocks. And the committee goals, though Mr. Foster drafted a long charter, in essence boiled down to improving learning for everyone. That's what we're here to do as parents, that's what we care about, is improving the learning environment, giving everybody a better foundation to learn. So we invited and, I don't know, we sort of sent all kinds of invitations out to folks around the city. Certainly lots of ASD staff and administrators were helpful and courteous and responsive. Principals kind of got involved towards the end, although a former ASD principal was there with us the whole time. There were medical professionals, the representatives from the state of Alaska, were doing a great job. Shape Alaska, Special Olympics Alaska, Food Bank, Children's Lunchbox. It was a broad sample of people who care deeply about health, wellness, and nutrition. The first meeting, we sort of tried to figure out what the goal was, and I'll just jump down to the bottom. Ms. Hildy said that the purpose is to review the existing board policy 50-40, to produce a recommendation to either keep the policy or edit the policy, and this is your guiding document, your priority plan, if you will, for health, wellness, and nutrition. At the second meeting, Lauren Kelsey is from the state of Alaska, Obesity Prevention Department, and she gave us the background on the gold standard wellness policy, which was drafted with the AASB and the Department of Education. It reflected CDC standards rooted in law and best practices. It was, it's a dynamic document that districts around the state have adopted and adapted in different ways. But she said that maybe we missed some key aspects during its adoption. We had therapists who talked about the importance of play throughout the day. The second and third meetings, at one point, the board president said, "Well, why can't we just take 15 minutes out of the current schedule and just do this?" And so we kind of, we expected to receive modified guidelines at the third meeting, that didn't happen, but an 85-35-35 was tentatively thrown out. We can just move on to the next slide. In the third meeting, Keri and I had spoken with nutrition experts at Providence and at South Central Foundation, Children's Lunchbox, Food Bank. It boils down to nutrition is really important for learning. It improves academic performance, this is what research tells us, this is what as a parent daily experience tells me, that if my kids don't eat breakfast, they are just kaput, right? And if they don't, you know, they get hangry, we've talked about this. Poor nutrition leads to adverse mental and physical health, which can lead to absences. The pediatric endocrinologist talked about, you know, a half dozen specialists that children go to once they're considered obese or morbidly obese. That's a lot of days of school that they're missing if they're in that system. We talked about how hunger is a problem in Anchorage. Based on the data dashboard, about 13,000 elementary students qualify for free and reduced lunches. I think that the total number is more like 20,000 or 21,000 ASD students overall. So they are more likely to be considered food insecure. That is considered an ACE score, an adverse childhood experience. And you can have all kinds of outcomes, negative outcomes, if you are hungry. So the question is, what can we do to help mitigate some of those problems? This was from the Children's Lunchbox and a physician who's taken this particular slide down to Juno. He said, "This is a great example of what happens to kids' brains with adverse childhood experiences, of which hunger is one of them." Of course, this is an example of extreme neglect, but I think common sense and what our hearts know tells us what science knows too, and that is that hunger and food insecurity are hugely damaging. More about nutrition, there are fabulous organizations in this city and volunteers who are really stepping in to fill the gaps. But I think this comes down to, when it comes to the school board's purpose, your purpose is to create the policies, right, that design the day to optimize all students' learning. The director of nutrition for the school district joined us for this day, and he, as I pointed out here, he said that when we don't have enough time to eat, okay, we have the best fed trash cans in the country. We'll just go right along. There are problems that happen when we eat too quickly, disordered eating. Children can have seizures or comas if their insulin balance is off for kids in a danger period. There are CDC guidelines for lunch that we can look to incorporate in a rewritten board policy 50-40, including no orders to eat in silence. Next slide, please. And if we can play this quick video, this is what... That's my daughter. That is what a silent lunch looks and sounds like. It is all orderly, but there is zero SEL going on, and that's a big part of what lunch should be, is the conversing, seeing how you're doing, and that bothers me. This is a sample of what has been redacted from Anchorage Board Policy 50-40, from the gold standard policy. Matt Su has kept this particular line in, that schools will provide adequate time for students to enjoy eating healthy foods for a minimum of 20 minutes of eating time after being served for lunch. They need that seat time. A 20-minute window does not give them 20 minutes of seat time, because there is serving and busing. Okay. So we went through recommendations, and we want to promote equity. The recommendation is to revise board policy 50-40, use evidence-based best practices, and show and give support to principals on how they can implement those things, and also make accountability a part of this. Mr. Foster said, his suggestion, he had a 20-page document, was to adopt the gold standard policy to reflect minimum guidelines, which would be an expanded opportunity for physical activity, 60 minutes a day. So expanded recess opportunities would do this. And ultimately, researchers have shown that healthy eating and physical activity are linked to better academic performance, better classroom behavior, like concentration, attentiveness, and time on task. And one of the things we'll get to is that we think that these things could be measured. You can just go through a couple of these. And this is my daughter, again, talking about recess. Well, she's double fisting her crunchy foods that she can't eat.
Snowball was 32 inches around, and we measured it with our bodies, and...
How did you know how big it was?
Right here, it's a meter thick.
Oh, because you guys have been giving that at school?
Thumb isn't, part of your thumb is an inch. And then your pinky nail, well, the first part of my pinky nail is 15.
So you guys learned that in your classroom, and then you measured, you used your classroom knowledge to measure, there's snowmen today? So it's 32 in...
So there's a consolidation of learning that happens through play, and she's also too hungry to even go out and play in the snow that fell a month ago. So we have recommendations, and that involves a pilot program, and I think Dr. Stock is gonna come on up and talk about that now. And we'd also like to get to revising board policy 50-40, so those are those two main things. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next slide was...
Thank you, ladies both, for your time and commitment on this.
Thank you, ladies both, for your time and commitment on this committee. We appreciate it.
So briefly, the idea coming out of the committee was that we would put together a pilot. There's a copy of this. If it's hard to read, I laid one down on your desk there. And so basically, I'll just cover what's in the table. What we would propose is that we would put out offers to principals for their schools to be willing to serve in a pilot for next fall. We put the, put it out last week on a Friday. We have already had last call, I didn't check with Mr. Nielsen this morning, but last call we had over fifteen schools already express an interest in coming to have a meeting where we would discuss how this could play out, how we would evaluate it. The central problem we have is, and I'll quote, since we're quoting famous people, I'll quote AEA President Tom Claymire, who said, "We're trying to put ten pounds in a five-pound bag." And so the real issue isn't whether or not, you know, how can we make this work? It's being clear about what we quit and give up as we try to do what we know is the right thing to do, but how do we, what do we prioritize? And so that's the challenge. So we would do a pilot. We would bring the teams in when school comes back in July and August, and we would personalize the pilot to that school. By personalize it, I mean we're taking all the gold standard guidelines, and we are making a list of those at the bottom of your document that you see there in front of you. And that would include breakfast, ten minutes, lunch, thirty minutes with a minimum of twenty minutes of seat time to eat, thirty minutes of recess that can be split depending on the schedules and the challenges principals have with scheduling, trying to be clear about the daily fifty-four minutes and how they get that, providing the minimum physical activity of ninety minutes, which is already our policy, is just saying we want to make sure that you're getting the normal phys ed. And then a willingness to work with my department and with assessment evaluation to actually document the changes. Now, you can't document changes in a six-month pilot and look at wellness and obesity and, you know, nutritional value and all those things, but what we can do is look to see how many schools are able to make as many of these accommodations as they can. So with that, I'll stop. That's the pilot. And with the board's blessing, I want to thank the committee for all the hard work. There's a lot of passionate people that have spent many hours researching it. And quite frankly, there aren't any administrators or educators who came to any of those meetings who disagreed. That's the hard part, is just trying to figure out how to take ten pounds and put it in a five-pound bag. But we're going to try. Maybe there's some new compression technology.
Are there any board questions, Mr. Donnelly?
Why not just extend the school day when the children are there by fifteen minutes?
Certainly an option that was discussed by the group. There's certainly other considerations, President, to member Donnelly, that we would have to look at. You know, there's issues with contract language and other things to see how all that works.
Ms. Bellamy?
And part of the committee, we wanted to see if there was a way to implement something for this fall, but the committee's going to continue to look at the board policy to see what kind of changes and maybe broader-scale changes like you're talking about, but make sure everybody's involved in a thorough process of considering what those options might be. But if there was an opportunity to have an improvement for this fall, it was hopeful that we could have that, and this pilot program is a positive way to do it, you know, voluntary. So that's not, not being considered as one of the many possibilities.
Mr. Donnelly?
What are the, what are the specific contract provisions that are in the way of expanding the time the students are in this, in class or available for lunch and recess and in class by fifteen minutes?
Well, the number one, President, to member Donnelly, the number one one is the AEA contract that talks about teachers being required to come to school thirty minutes before and after the student day. It doesn't define the student day, so that's an issue of discussion that certainly the district could have. Certainly, there would be other classified staff who are hourly employees and other folks that we would have to do some analysis on costs and because now you've extended the day of supervision. And so there would have to be a lot of issues boiled around how to supervise those morning slots, how we would, how we would make all that work, so. Certainly, it's worth discussing, and I think the committee is certainly willing to do that with board support, to do a study to see what the ramifications would be.
Ms. Bellamy?
So, Dr. Stock, would, one of the schools participating in the pilot, would they might be able to do a earlier start?
I can answer that. That would be through the President to member Bellamy. Certainly, it's a possibility. It would be a member and a member agreement with the teachers' union. It still would involve the teachers' union because that thirty minutes before and after, although their day would not be extended, that time would have to be considered. And certainly, we're willing and able, and, you know, there were quite a few teachers that are willing and able, it's just a matter of the process to really start slowly.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Holman?
I do applaud the idea of a pilot, and a lot of it is that I think it's more complex than most of us realize. If you've spent time in school cafeterias, it's easy for schools to kind of come into a situation where they really want to control things, and they want things to go very efficiently. You sort of assume if you give students a certain amount of time, they will eat because they all know how to do that, and that's what we're there for, and why don't they just do it and get on with their lives? But the reality is, it can really become a tense situation. I've been a monitor in lunchrooms where it wasn't fun for anybody. It really was a case where you just hoped you got through the end of it without something bad happening that involved student discipline or an issue or a mess. And avoiding that unfortunately takes more planning and, and in some cases, it may, you may have to try to reduce the number of kids that are in the lunchroom at the same time, which makes a more complex class schedule. I mean, it rapidly gets more complicated than you would ever want to think it might. But it's because we're feeding hundreds of kids at a time in a situation where some kids are really just uncorking and releasing a lot of pent-up exuberance, we'll call it. And actually, eating is not at the top of their list. All these things about nutrition and exercise and all, it's not really what they're there about. It's the adult goals that we've set, and so often, we don't really understand why they can't understand our goals and adopt them. I think that going in with a pilot in a couple of schools to figure out how to make lunch work really well is going to be more consuming than most people realize, and I think it's an excellent thing for us to do. It really does go to human health, and it's just, we would typically do, it's like, well, we'll give them a twenty-minute lecture on human health, and then we'll make them eat in ten minutes. It just, we work against ourselves when we do it. And I hope the pilots kind of help unify things and create a pathway for other schools to adopt it, and I think it will be great.
Any other board comments or questions, Ms. Michaelis?
When selecting the pilot schools, can we make sure that we get a broad representation of the community and, you know, Title I schools and non-Title I? And then, so it looks like December will be the evaluation. Does that mean in probably January we'll see a report on something like that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Can I just ask a question?
Certainly.
I was just curious, when the committee looked at the physical activity part, aside from PE, they did consider those movement breaks that teachers do during the school day as well?
Yes.
Okay.
And we've got pages of ideas, you know, there's training, there's best lunchroom practice, there's ways to do recess, there's all kinds of research that the group has put together that we have as options to go with this. And when the teams come in and choose to volunteer, this would be a holistic effort. It's not just here, here's the schedule, follow it. There's a whole lot of pieces about training and visiting other schools who have great lunchroom processes figured out, how they manage their lunchrooms, how they manage playgrounds, how they do conflict resolution, there's on the playgrounds. Every principal will tell you that unsupervised or loose time is where the vast majority of their problems arise, and so we have to take all that into consideration. You're welcome.
Okay. No further questions or comments. Thank you very much. At this time, we have public testimony, and before that, I need to read a statement. "The board welcomes public comments on agenda items, both action and non-action, as well as in general. We value public comment as it both ensures that we remain aware of public thoughts, ideas, and concerns, and informs our decision-making process. We have a table front and center with two seats and microphones available for testimony when I call your name. You will have three minutes to testify, and you may begin speaking when you see the timer on the left. It will count down, and when you have thirty seconds left, the number will turn yellow, and we would ask that you would please finish your sentence as soon as possible. In order to provide equity to all that would like to speak, the board asks that there is no clapping after testimony, as it may intimidate others wishing to testify with opposing opinions. Additionally, it's not our practice of board members answer questions or engage in discussion with members of the public. This is your time to speak and our time to listen. The board will consider all information shared by the public, and when deemed necessary, issues raised in testimony will be referred to the administration for follow-up." And first on our list is Julianne Schaefer, Juliana Schaefer, and Bob Bradley. Claire Field, and I can't read that.
Khalil Bowling.
Khalil.
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 Bowling.
Bowling, oh, sorry. And Claire, you begin.
Good evening. My name is Claire Field...
Would you pull your mic down, please?
Good evening. My name is Claire Field, and I'm an athletic trainer at Anchorage Fracture and Orthopedic Clinic. I'm here today to testify in support of the ASD-60 initiative to increase lunch and recess time in our elementary schools. As someone who works primarily with students at Service High School, this initiative will probably not affect my patient population, at least not for a few years anyway. I do think that it is important to note, however, that promoting healthy habits at a young age is crucial so that those habits can continue throughout the lifespan of our Anchorage students. It is well documented that exercise and proper nutrition throughout the lifespan can prevent the development of chronic diseases such as diabetes, heart disease, and even depression. Recession can help students become more active, teach them how to form stronger social bonds, and can teach them forms of healthy stress management. Ensuring that students have enough time to eat will provide their minds and bodies with fuel to facilitate healthy growth as well as learning. It is also supportive that kids who are introduced to healthy lifestyles at a young age are more likely to continue those habits throughout their lives. As a healthcare provider, I believe in instilling healthy habits at a young age. The ASD-60 initiative will not only ensure the success of our students in the classroom, but also into their adult lives. Thank you for your time."
Hello. My name's Khalil Bowling. I'm the head football coach at Service High School. I want to thank you guys for your time this evening to speak. I too am here in support and to advocate for the ASD-60 initiative. I think it's important as it relates to behavior of students of all ages. I'm fortunate to be able to work with a student population at the high school level, but I do believe that it's the behavior patterns and the processes that are instilled in that early developmental phase that kind of trickle down, and by the time that we get them at the high school level, we're able to see kind of the long-term benefits or impacts that may arise or exist. I'm a huge proponent of active lifestyles. I'm fortunate to be in a position I can encourage and help to enhance activity in our students. But the big thing, I think, is it's a behavior-based approach. As the group presented, it's the improved focus is definitely a result of having that ample time for both lunch and recess, that the shortened lunch and recess times are actually counterproductive to academic achievement. I think a big thing, especially at the high school level, is forming strong student and community bodies. And I think with this initiative and the time and research that's gone into the best practices and approaches to take with this, I think that there will be benefits seen down the road. It may not be right away or in the short term, but I think long-term, the data has shown that there is an impact. I think the heightened cognitive performance that students are likely to attain with increased periods of both lunch and recess is a big thing. At the high school age, I'm, our big approach is kind of emphasizing the conscious behavior patterns and the habits and the thought processes that our student athletes make every day. I think at the early developmental phases, it's some of those, it's those subconscious, subconscious behavior patterns that are formed. And again, all of this starts during these early developmental years. I think it's important that we look at these decisions that are made from a research and data-driven approach, and I think we need to be solutions-oriented. And I think that the data and research definitely shows that there is a need for an increase in both lunch and recess time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to testify? Yes, sir, if you'd come forward and state your name, please.
My name is Eugene Carl Haberman. I represent myself. I live in the Matsue Valley. I follow the public process. When the public process does not approve the decision made by the governing body, it's more likely in the public interest. Tomorrow night at the Anchorage Assembly, on the six o'clock portion of the meeting, on one of the first two items that the assembly will hold public hearings on, to continue a public hearing, is an item that I addressed at the previous, at a previous assembly meeting when they had it on the item. The item is basically this, when I addressed the Anchorage Assembly. I said, "As Anchorage Assembly members, you address policies and procedures before, during, and after public hearing. This ordinance will make it illegal for the public to address policies and procedures during a public hearing. A violation of freedom of speech, in which you can dictate what those policies and procedures are, and the public cannot question or comment. As of the time of me speaking before this mic right now, I'm not aware of any news media reporting about what this particular ordinance of freedom of speech. I am aware, informed by others, that the social media has had comments on that part, but the media itself has not addressed this at this time. The ordinance for public hearing is tomorrow night, or mind you, the six o'clock portion, it's one of the first two items of that six o'clock portion of the meeting." Now, I would like to say this. Many people are aware of my presence. I've been Alaska resident for over forty years, approximately half those years as an Anchorage resident during the days of Mayor George Sullivan. The other twenty years in Matsue Borough, I've always been an active involvement, involved in the community. But what I witnessed in this latest chapter, which I'm on my eighth year, is a situation like, I've addressed these issues of concern on process and procedures before the Borough Assembly, Alaska Borough, and so forth. But one thing stands out among my addressing these concerns. I do not recall, as far as the Anchorage Assembly, recall more than two times been asked a question, and happening in the last twelve months. I would not have to repeat my concerns, and this situation could have been corrected years ago, but Assembly members in Anchorage, as well as the Borough, have conducted a policy of indifference and just did whatever they want to do. But I know for a fact that more people out there are aware of what's going on because I've made the effort over the years and dressed this mic and elsewhere, even though the press pretty much makes sure my message doesn't get out, and more people, I believe, are in support of what I do than the votes that you win in the election. So I keep, I feel that, while in closing my remarks, I've been asked a question in the past, is why do I continue doing this thing? First of all, I would like to quit. I deserve to quit and just go on to some other situation, but I feel it's my responsibility because of all the years what I witnessed and seen what's happening and still is happening, I feel it's my responsibility to stay with the situation and address you and other bodies. Thank you very much."
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to testify? Okay, hearing no one else, we're going to move on to the superintendent's update.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a few, more than a few, many short things just to share with the Board, and I'd like to start with Andy. Please come forward. So, we have some good news and some actions we're taking in regard to nutrition services. And Tom Roth, as well, will come forward. And we have Andrew Mergans is our Director of our Nutrition Program, as well as Tom Roth, who works with him in regard to ASD operations. And we're going to take three to five minutes to share publicly some of the work we're doing with lunches.
Right. So, thank you, Dr. Bishop. So, I'll run through this pretty quickly, but it is kind of a good news story. We started this last March with a pilot program at Service High School to see if we could find a way to freshen up the way we provide service in the cafeterias, the way we present meals, the way the meals that are served, and then what they're served on. So, slide, please. So, if you look at the picture on the left-hand side of the screen, you can see that's the methodology that we serve in all of the schools, whether that's high, middle, or elementary, and the kind of the TV dinner mode, the heat and serve. And what we really want to do is transition away from that and kind of undo that 30-year-old knot and shift back to the way things were when we were in school, and serve the meals on a reusable, re-washable, or washable plate, and give it a little bit better presentation, the quality's a little better, just the appearance and the way it's presented to the students. As we go through this change process, we've got four different methodologies that we're going to use. We're going to introduce some more menu items that are of a more scratched or homemade base in an attempt to shift away from the prepackaged methodology that we've used for the longest time. We want to use a different service style, where rather than the kids are getting a cup of vegetables, for example, they're able to have a little bit more choice with how they choose which vegetable they want and still remain in compliance with the USDA. We want to provide some other new, fresh items that'll come out there, a variety of different things. And we want to make it more just-in-time, so that items aren't sitting in a warming cart or under a heat lamp for longer than what they absolutely have to. And we think this is going to provide a much better service. So, why the change? Really, it's about improving the quality and the appeal of the stuff that we're serving. Not that it's bad now, but it certainly can get better than the TV dinner methodology that we've been using. Second of all, there is a lot of waste that gets generated when you use the plastic service ware, the plastic trays, the paper plates, and all the rest of that. On the average, about 18 tons a year winds up going into the landfill. And we think we can significantly reduce that by transitioning away from that service style. We spend about $100,000 a year on packaging alone. And by shifting away from this, eventually, we can do away with that expense. And we anticipate that by shifting away from the paper trays and the plastic serving containers, we can get a return on investment of those trays in about four and a half months. It's going to reduce the amount of waste and the cost that we spend on particularly produce. We anticipate a 50% to 60% reduction in that product, just because the kids are able to get a little bit better choice in how they make their selection. And we also anticipate a significant reduction in labor and what it takes to prepare those meals. This is the proposed timeline that we're going to attempt to use to get this started. As I said, we started back in March in Service. There were some really good lessons that we learned in how to figure that out. And we're going to take those lessons learned and, beginning this coming school year in August, those middle and high schools that have the necessary equipment on hand, primarily dishwashers, steam tables, and some other ancillary equipment, we're going to start implementing that same process that we did at Service High at those high schools. As we go through that process and we begin to procure the equipment for the remaining other half of the high schools that don't possess that equipment, we'll be able to transition those in the following summer. And then, by the end of a year after next, we should have the service style implemented in all the secondary schools across the district. As we do that, we're going to look at how do we make that transition from elementary school service style, the way it's done now, into transitioning to how we propose to do it at the secondary schools. And that's really where the biggest challenge is going to be. And you can see kind of the yellow box that's on the right-hand side of the slide there is a little bit more aspirational. Most of the kitchens in the elementary schools were designed for the heat-and-serve methodology. They're very small, they're very cramped. There is really not enough space in any of them to shoehorn any more equipment into them, primarily dishwashers. That's really the long pole in the tent, if you will, on how we do the transition from one style to another, is how do we do the dishes? So, we'll have to work through that process as we go along, and we'll conduct a few more pilots at some select elementary schools to see what lessons we need to learn in that direction. But we really anticipate that within about five years, give or take, that we can get the service style transitioned from what we do now to what we aspire to as a result of doing the test at Service High. This is not without challenges. As I said, we've been using this methodology for 30-plus years. So, it's going to take us some time to undo that, as I said before, undo that knot. It's going to be a period of time where we may have a foot in two canoes. We'll have some schools that are using the new service style, and we'll have some schools that are using the old service style, and we may even have a couple in between. We are going to need some equipment, as I mentioned, dishwashers, steam tables, trays, some other ancillary equipment. We're going to have to come up with the cost of those. We don't quite know exactly what it is. That's going to be part of the pilot program. But we'll figure that out, and we'll begin to transition as we go. There are some other challenges operationally. The current methodology is built for speed. It's very efficient in that sense. So, we may see a nominal increase in the amount of time that it takes kids to get through the line. But we think that detriment is well overwhelmed by the improvement in service style, food quality, and the opportunity for kids to get the best meal that we can provide. And at that, questions?
Ms. Hildy?
I saw the Phase Two and Three going out to 2025. If the funding was available, say through legislators wanting to invest in child nutrition, is it possible to have implementation across the district sooner?
It is. I think we can do that. As I said, the biggest challenge is going to be in kitchen remodeling. There are some schools out there where the kitchens are smaller than the board meeting room that's to my right, your left. And there is a lot of equipment that needs to get put in there, and there's storage space and all the rest of that. In those particular schools, as we go through the remodeling process, it may be that we have a modified service style. We don't quite get there upfront, and it may take us a little bit longer, but it's doable.
For instance, we could have, Madam President, a modified where perhaps the food choice isn't the pack-and-go kind of thing. It could be similar to this, but if one of the main reasons is the dishwasher, and that's for sanitary reasons, you might still have some paper. So, it might be food, but not all the way green, but the food would be green. How's that? So, we could, so there could be a modified version, but we'll work through all those kinks, and that's why we're looking at really setting a doable timeline at first. We'd rather, you know, under-promise and over-deliver.
There are some things we don't know we don't know yet, so we'll have to work through that.
Thank you so much.
Any other Board questions or comments? Well, I'm excited about it. Thank you.
Madam President and Board, the second item is transition. That's taken normed. So, AmesWeb, however, is changing their assessment internally and basically said, "Okay, next year, if you want to remain with our company, we're moving to this new assessment." And I believe it's AmesWeb Plus. Looking at that, what a group and our team did here was to put a committee together of teachers and administrators and psychometricians and said, "Let's take a look at this. What do we want? If we have an option, because we're being booted off because the company is changing, let's see what's out there." And at that time, you know, years ago, when Dibbles was there, FastBridge was not. But now, there's this other company called FastBridge. And I want to share with you a video that was put together. This, too, will be an item of probably concern of change, because we're moving. We've heard change when we did the Alice drills. We've had change when we went from Q to Zangle. We've had, we're experiencing change anxiety on HealthMaster, so in reading. So, a lot of change causes anxiety, and we understand that. And just wanted to share with the Board what has been done and what we're sharing with teachers, so that as we move forward into next year, we'll be comfortable in knowing what's to come and that we're taking care. We wanted our teachers and our staff to understand we're going to take care of them and really guide them through this change process again. So, here's just a quick video. You'll see what our staff will see before the end of the school year.
For a number of years now, we've relied on AmesWeb 1.0 to identify and monitor student learning needs in mathematics and reading. Now, a change is necessary, because Pearson is ending its support for AmesWeb 1.0 as of July 1 of this year. But with change arrives opportunity. Over the past four months, many of our colleagues, teachers, principals, coaches, coordinators, have worked to identify our district's greatest needs and wants for a universal screening and progress monitoring tool. The search was on for an intuitive and easy-to-use assessment that would seamlessly deliver actionable data to school decision-makers, but most importantly, to the teachers who make learning happen every day. An extensive pilot was conducted in four schools with two universal screeners that met the high bar that was set by our committees. Teachers and coaches at Muldoon, Rogers Park, Bowman, and Creekside Elementary stepped forward to experience the assessments with their students. They took time to meet and study the reports and consider the benefits. A unanimous choice became clear: FastBridge. In August, instructional coaches will receive specific training on the use of this new tool. This training will be rolled out to teachers during the start of schooling services and in the weeks leading up to the first assessment window. In addition to face-to-face trainings, FastBridge features easy-to-follow intuitive training modules and videos that demonstrate how to give the assessments and, later, how to view and use the reports. We are all excited to see this new tool in the hands of teachers, where it can make a difference in the learning of our students.
I had the opportunity to pilot the FastBridge program, and I am very excited as a teacher. It is super-user-friendly. I had no prior training, and I was able to set up my progress monitoring in less than two minutes. The same day, I was able to start progress monitoring my students with math and reading. One of the things I loved about the FastBridge one-minute reading measures is the ability to code errors. It helps me better understand how to meet the needs of my students.
The FastBridge reports are easy to read and comprehensive. They provide a holistic view of students' abilities.
The student features of FastBridge were really user-friendly overall. My students could simply log in with their ASD credentials, and it was easy for me to instruct them to click on the red fish for reading or the blue fish for math. I also really appreciated that the interface and the questions for the students were really developmentally appropriate. On tests like the math test, it was reading the questions to them, so I knew I was able to assess my students' math abilities rather than their ability to read the questions.
Thank you. On that, and again, this is an internal assessment in regard to a universal screener. One of the key components of the FastBridge is that it is a more robust screener for dyslexia as well. So, it really has additional benefits. And really, when it, the final decision was really based on the user, and the users of these are educators in their classrooms, because they, if you progress monitor, generally, you'll do it weekly, which then you can adjust your instruction. So, we needed it to work not only for reporting our progress, but also a universal screener to see the needs of the kids, but then also be able to actually have the people who are making decisions, again, by research evidence, every three minutes, teachers making a decision in the classroom, something that works for him or her. So, more soon on that. But we had Robert, our person, put it together with Patrick. It's Patrick's voice, our Director of Assessment. And we'll see how it goes, but we'll give an update in the fall. There is a concern in regard to a change of an assessment. But again, these are, the assessment itself is pretty universal. It's just different companies. But this is definitely a more robust company that offers more options. As they said, the error analysis, it just has more information. But the kids probably won't even notice. They don't really pay attention to, you know, the name-brand of their readings, so.
Any Board comments or questions? So, I do have one question. Is that will be replacing something that they're doing now?
Correct. Replacing AmesWeb.
And so, it'll be done at the same time as AmesWeb was done, the spring's fall?
Correct.
Winter, fall, whatever?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And again, there are three one-minute assessments, and then you take the mean of those, or average of those. And, you know, that's their, a quick score. And then, if kids are not performing in the trend of millions of students their age, then that's when we take a second look, and that's what a universal screener does. It allows you to really assess right away, rather than waiting for failure, to support children.
Great. Thank you.
All right. And this one's just a fun piece, and we'll let it roll. Graduation week, we just wanted to share. We have graduations today, and we had saved today. We have Polaris coming up, I believe, tomorrow. And we, or Stellar, rather. Still some graduations going on, but we just wanted to share the eight major graduations of the major comprehensive high schools, as we had pictures of those last week. Also, wanted to highlight the regalia, that policy that our team worked on, was, went, flew very well, not a problem. There was one turned down. A part of the policy is no words and advertising. And so, just one student, their notification had us have that conversation with them. But first-ever King Tech graduating class. Standing room only, as well as Alaska Middle College. We certainly cannot have those in school auditoriums or even the Wendy Williamson at UAA. We'll have to move those to larger venues. Happy kids, happy parents. It was really a delight, and thank you so much. We know it's two hours of standing and shaking hands and just seeing kids. But so many students walked through the lines and just said, "Thank you so much. Thank you so much." One gal even said, "Thank you for all these experiences I had." And others were just like, "What's up?", and moved on. But they were certainly happy, ready to celebrate and move on to the next chapter of their lives. And remember, commencement means to start. And so, we're happy to have them start as young people in our community, doing good for themselves and others. And today was an enjoyable day, but certainly felt in the heart. Mount Spur had a closing ceremony, and President Marsette attended with several administrators. The school this year is 65 years old. It started in '54, even prior to statehood, if we can go back. And they did a time capsule that they want to open up in another 65 years. And in it, they put a flash drive. We'll see if 65 years from now, they can figure out what a flash drive did and have the equipment to run it. But they put that of the beginning pictures of their schools back from 1954, as well as some letters from their classes, what was cool now about movies. So, they participated, and the time capsule is about this big, a little bit bigger than my bottle here. And pretty exciting. A couple of fifth and sixth grade students were able to participate in that. And we then had the shovel ceremony there to bury it. And then, went into the school, and each grade level performed a fancy dance. The Adams family for first grade, we even had some Bob Marley in fifth grade. Quite a few artists, I would say, and they got cooler as the grades got older. I don't know, it was their teachers or what. But the selection was great. The kids had sing-alongs, each grade level in the school. Certainly some sadness, because the school is closing. But again, as an update, the students and staff are all placed, and the students' families had choices of Aurora or Orion. had choices of Aurora or Orion. And to our delight and surprise, they, it was about 50-50 split. So we were prepared, because the schools are big enough to have the whole entire school of Mount Spur go into one or the other. But by allowing parents and students self-choice, they themselves selected two different schools and hence staffing then fit into the two different schools as well. Some members, if there wasn't a job, because there's only one grade level or one PE teacher, certainly some were placed outside of the base, but the majority were placed at a base school, which was priority, not necessarily always in the grade level. So that, we couldn't meet, because it's really, our teachers in grade levels depend on our student, that's district-wide, not just in, certainly our closing school, in this situation, but similar to any school, if student populations move, that's where our staffing goes. We're very agile that way. But it was certainly wonderful, just gracious staff. Time and time again, when I would talk to teachers and just, you know, just really, you know, really have an ear out for what they were experiencing when their school closed. One of the things they said is that they really knew what to do and they had always learned from their students that change is okay. Because many of these students in the school have a two-year stay at the school and their parents move. After two years, they get deployed. And so change is the constant in their students' lives and they knew that they could look for new opportunities in their change as well. So that was today and certainly Wednesday will be the last school day for students at Mount Spur. Legacy of 65 years and in 65 more, we will, I probably won't, but people in Anchorage will enjoy opening that capsule to really see the differences and what had come before. Thank you. And that concludes my update. Madam President.
And I'll just add that, you know, really apprehensive of, you know, what the mood would be, but it was a celebration. Definitely happy faces, the kids were smiling, the staff, yeah, there was cake. They were all excited about that. But definitely, it was good, it was good. So.
I move to approve the consent agenda, ASD Memorandum 169 Personnel Report, March 11, 2019, Special Meeting Minutes, and March 18, 2019, Work Session and Executive Session Minutes.
Second.
Members, please vote. Motion passes with seven yeas. Oh, sorry. I think, I think my school year's over already. So before we start our public testimony on action items, the procedure for agenda item testimony is follows. An action item memo is first introduced by the Vice President and if seconded by another board member, I will open the floor for public testimony. If you have signed up in advance or indicate you're interested in providing testimony, I will call on you to come to the front table to speak. Again, you'll have three minutes to talk and you'll see a timer on the screen to your left to monitor the time remaining to inform you of when you need to conclude. After all testimony closes, I will open the floor for board discussion, followed by the Student Board Representative Vote before finally calling for the official vote. The voting results will be displayed on the screen.
I move to approve ASD Memorandum 159, the selection of McCool Carlson-Green MCG Architects as the designer of record for the Greening Middle School Earthquake Recovery Project and authorize the superintendent to enter into a contract with MCG for professional services in the amount of $2,073,549 for the purpose of design through construction administration.
Second.
Student vote? Oh, sorry. Testimony? I tell you, I am out of sync tonight, I apologize. Any testimony on Memorandum 159? No testimony, is there any board discussion? No board discussion? Okay, student vote.
Yes.
Board members, please vote. And that passes with seven yeas.
I move to approve ASD Memorandum 158, the selection of Visik Durz Sizer BDS Architects as the designer of record for the Eagle River Elementary Earthquake Recovery Project and authorize the superintendent to enter into a contract with BDS for professional services in the amount of $999,253 for the purpose of design through construction administration.
Second.
Is there any public testimony on Memorandum 158? Seeing that, is there any board discussion? No board discussion? Student vote, please.
Yes.
Members, please vote. That memorandum passes with seven yeas.
I move to approve ASD Memorandum 166 and adopt the attached resolution opposing state education funding reductions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any public testimony on Memorandum 166? Seeing no testimony, is there any board discussion? Ms. Hildy.
Well, thank you, Madam President. We had a similar vote on this about a month ago, but we didn't take the opportunity to discuss it, so I want to make sure we do that this evening. Last time I did vote against it and I plan to do the same again tonight, not because I don't want to have the legislature approve the budget that we sent to them, that's why we prepared it, but because I don't understand the strategy behind this. It feels a little bit political to me, it feels ill-timed and that we're already at, where they, they're in the dual conference committees, right? And we've had legislative support. So I support nonpartisan advocacy. I think we're at a good position. There's a time for this kind of advocacy where you kind of make noise and I think that happened at the beginning. And certainly, I think every board member was active in sharing their concerns about whatever cuts to the budget, whether they were dramatic 25% or a 10% or even a 1%, what those implications would be. But I think our responsibility is talking about very large budgets in a responsible way, where there's a conversation, talking back and forth with our legislators in our community. We had Senator Von Imhoff come here and speak to us and say, "Here's what I need from you guys, here's, you know, the information I want." So I hope going forward as a board, we present our reasoning for what we're doing with our budget. We have these guys craft this budget over a very long process, through lots of meetings. The board approved the budget and for good reason, for good plans to help our students. That's what I want to be communicating to our legislature, so that they understand the value behind what we're requesting.
Mr. Holloman.
Well, I do admit that the lack of discussion, the last time we brought this issue up was concerning and I have to admit, I made an assumption that it would probably pass and kind of speak on its own. I don't frankly understand where this is partisan or where it's making noise. The idea of a 25% cut and that we aren't opposed to that, I think was exceptionally stunning to a lot of people, and particularly to our staff. In essence, it says to our staff that maybe a third of them could go and we would be okay with that. And I'm really not. We do have a responsibility to try to spend every penny will, and in a large organization, I think anybody that's being reasonable and practical understands you don't ever reach perfection, but you strive for perfection. And when you're spending public money, you should always strive for perfection, whether you're flush or whether you're lean, it's just a responsibility when you're spending public funds. I think there's a lot more we could do. I think we've already cut programs that helped kids. We've been doing it for years and the budget that was proposed was dramatic to me. I quite frankly was stunned. It wasn't something, I think what was presented to us as potential cuts was not something that was done, talking to a lot of people over a long period of time. I think it was sudden, I think it was unreasonable. And when I look around the state, I see mayors and superintendents taking strong outspoken positions on it. And I think a lot of people are puzzled why Anchorage might not. I do think the remarks our superintendent and other administrative personnel made have been very reasonable, they've been very informative. But in essence, the only thing the board has said officially at this point is that they're not going to vote for a resolution opposing them. I think we should, and particularly when the Assembly stepped out, to say that they would work to try to mitigate the damage to the school district and the school district didn't back them up on their own resolution. So this is meant to say that we support what the Assembly did. I think they were very clear and very direct and that we should not suffer a major cut unless it's absolutely necessary. I don't think that has been shown yet. But also to say to our staff, we really do value what they're doing, we think we need every one of them, we think we need more, which is how I feel personally, so I will be voting in favor of it.
Our student rep, Ms. Emily.
I think that it's great that we're like putting it in writing to say that like, yeah, this is a big thing that's happening and we aren't a fan of it because it would affect our district in so many ways. My, I have a question, is there anything, I know it's kind of late, as Ms. Hildy was saying, like they've already moved to, like they're in, working on the budget right now, I believe. But are there any like actions or ways that we can follow up with, like, actions that can follow up our words to like show, because like none of us want the budget to be decreased that much, like we need the money for our students. And I just am wondering if there's any ways, like other ways that we can show that.
Through the President, actually at, it was ill-timing at 5 o'clock today, the House Finance had an open testimony, but it was during our board meeting. Tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM, the Senate Finance. So any kind of letters written as well from just stakeholders, whether they be students, community members, parents, staff, is helpful and we can send that, those addresses of our delegation. And but especially your Girdwood and then your school South. So really identifying those folks that represent you and your community, we'll get those names to you. But anything helps, but consequently, the, you know, the train's rolling and today at 5 was, it was announced last night that they were just taking open testimony, again, tomorrow at 9:00 AM. Thanks.
Ms. Bellamy.
Thank you. So I did not, I wasn't on the board when the first vote was taken. I, as a citizen, I was disappointed that there was no discussion. I was also disappointed that there were, with the outcome of the vote. So for me, when I look back at the work the board did in passing the budget that it needed, not what it thought it could get. It just seemed a little odd to me that with such drastic cuts, that we would not have taken a firmer stand to let, I mean, we have to let, for me, my advocacy is standing up, giving voice to those things that impact our kids and families. And I don't see it as partisan, I see it as being an advocate for public education and for the families and students that we serve. So I'm glad to see it come back so that I can support it in the way that it's been a little bit, no, it's a lot different, I think, than before, in that we are supporting the Assembly's resolution. I see that as a fantastic way for us to let families, staff, and our students know, you know, that it's not okay. It's not okay to propose such drastic cuts. And I don't know what we'll do, if we, you know, what the future holds, but I think it's important for us to give voice to that.
I'm going to call on Ms. Vakalis first.
Thank you to all the board members for sharing their thoughts and comments. I was not able to support it in the past because of the wording of some of it. If we had to, if we were facing, you know, proposed cuts of one or two or 3% or somewhere in the, you know, super single digits, we are fortunate enough to be able to withstand something like that. The proposed cuts that were 26% plus bond debt, I mean, the whole slate, that, I don't believe in any of my budgeting and accounting could find a way to make that work for anything, anywhere, anyhow. And so having this resolution come back up with some change in the verbiage gives me the ability to support it right now. On a technical note, on the bottom of it, it says that it was passed and approved on May 6th and it is now May 20th, and so that will need to be amended.
Thank you. Ms. Hildy.
Thank you. And I just want to talk a little bit about how I view advocacy work and understanding why I won't be supporting this. There is a method to advocacy. I've been fortunate to work on numerous human rights campaigns in very complex situations where there were warlords involved, right? We're not talking about that, we're talking about education advocacy. We're talking about a legislator who generally supports education and people who have their children in our schools, in our community. These are our neighbors, people we know. There is a time for making statements and then there is a time for doing the work part. And that's the part where I'm generally frustrated with, where we come out and say these bold ideas, but then we don't follow through with the very hard work of advocacy, saying, "Here's how we build our case for what we want, here's the value behind it." We had a senator come here and say, "This is what I need to go back with," but we haven't responded to that. I hear sometimes excuses for that, but simply put, we could, we could do it. We could say, "What do we need to communicate to our legislatures, the value of what we're doing here, the value in our budget," and come back with that as part of a strategy. But this is absent a strategy. It's just saying, "Well, they did it, so we should do it," which, I mean, that's the opposite of what I teach my kids, right? So it's not that I don't oppose cutting education funding. I approved a budget that I support, that I share with legislators, that I think is in the best interest of our students. But I don't think this kind of tactic is what's going to help us nine months from now and we start the budget process again, or five or 10 years. What do I want education discussions to look like in Anchorage, in Alaska? I want it to be a robust discussion where we really talk about what the needs of children are and what the funding requirements are and what that really looks like and have people talking with us, not just throwing stuff out. So that's my reluctance to support it.
Before I call in Mr. Holloman, Mr. John Lee, I haven't heard from you yet.
Yeah, I agree with the comments of Member Hildy and I've spoken directly to the Governor's Chief of Staff about the importance of K-12 education funding and the challenges the budget cycle for school districts overlapping with the state budget presents for planning for the upcoming school year. That's a particularly difficult challenge, looking into a year where there's reductions proposed. And I'm very pleased, and I hope all the board members are, that the Governor has just very recently announced he will support the legislature's currently proposed K-12 funding for next year pending resolution of constitutional dedicated funds questions that are out there. However, I also agree with the point made by Member Hildy, that we need to do a better job reducing our administrative overhead. We had Senator Von Imhoff, the co-chair of the Senate Finance Committee, come and talk to us about what would be effective with legislators. I think we were very effective two years ago and resulted in some additional funding being provided for the first time in many years by the legislature. But I believe the board lost a lot of credibility regarding state funding this year when the board adopted the preliminary budget that despite, despite Senator Von Imhoff's advice, rejected all my amendments to reduce non-classroom-related administrative overhead. They were very specifically targeted to protect our classrooms and yet to do what the senator was asking us to do and target non-classroom administrative overhead. And also actually requested an additional $80 million of state funding in a year where our elected officials were struggling with a $1.6 billion income shortfall to balance the budget. I don't think that's an effective lobbying strategy. That's more of a slap. That's more of a slap in the face than trying to work with other public officials to achieve our goals here. Additionally, the board used a large portion of the additional funding that we were successful in getting for this year, not for reducing class sizes, but to give salary increases. And we still didn't, we also didn't use it to address what I thought was the most outstanding need we had, that we should have invested funding into with that additional money we got from the legislature and the state government. And that was meeting, trying to fill the 50 unfilled special needs teaching positions that we've got by addressing that. We should have adopted some market-based solution to that and we failed to do that with that funding. I thought that was the highest use for that funding, was addressing those special needs positions rather than doing a blanket salary increase. So to, I think to make communications like this effective, the district should first create a record of doing just what Senator Von Imhoff came here in person, which is pretty impressive and asked us to do. And that's to reduce non-classroom-related administrative costs and provide the legislature with specific proposals to improve our students' educational outcomes that are not just based on spending more money. And that's what we actually began to do several years ago, which was successful.
Ms. McChale.
So I also appreciate all of the comments. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I, I think that we do communicate to our legislators and to the legislature as a whole what types of changes we are making within the district to be more efficient and to use our funds more effectively. I know that we, the board members do that individually and I know that Dr. McChale and our chief financial officer have both testified extensively on changes that we've made that have streamlined some of our activities and improved our efficiencies. And I agree that this signing this resolution now is a little bit late and I'm very, very thankful that we have a situation in June where our legislators and hopefully the Governor will support the funding that was passed last year. The fact is that I think our job as board members is to advocate what is best for our students. And flat funding still does mean cuts and we have cut programs and we've cut resources that have had direct impacts on our students. And so I will absolutely be voting yes on this. I voted yes on it the first time, the first version that came up. And I think that's my job as a school board member is to continue to try to run the district as effectively as, you know, support the superintendent in creating as much efficiency as possible. But the bottom line is when we have fewer resources, it does impact the kids. Thank you.
Ms. Holloman.
You know, one thing I want to clarify, I'm not sure where the word tactic came from. This is a resolution. It's a statement of belief. We either believe it or we don't. It's not actually aimed at any one person and it's certainly not aimed at a party. It's not aimed as a political maneuver. It's a statement of belief and if we believe it, we should vote yes. If we don't believe it, we should vote no. In response to Member Hickok, one thing we can say to the legislature is that we do really appreciate what they did last year in, say again.
Member who?
Hickok.
Hickok?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I don't, I didn't know what her last name was.
And I can easily screw something like that up. In that they, one of the messages we managed to get across is that without spending any more money, we could save a lot of angst, money, effort, and improve what we do by knowing in advance what our budget was. And so not only did they take up our budget early last year and complete it, which is a politically difficult thing for them to accomplish, but they also voted our funds for this coming year. And that's allowed us, otherwise I think we would have had an incredible number of pink slips go out, which is exceptionally disruptive to staff, to the stability of the people assembled in schools as teams to do what they do. I think it's always important to thank them when they do something like that because that's, that's very encouraging. They don't always get a lot of people lined up at the door to say, you know, here's something you really got right for us and we appreciate it. I hope it would become an annual thing because it does mean that people continue to live here. They continue to buy a car in June. They continue to close on a house in July and August because they know they're going to be here long enough to do those things. Those things are good for Anchorage and they're, they're good for the school district. It's good for our folks to do one budget and one staffing allocation as opposed to having to shift and resort and do it again and again while people watch and wonder. So I'm not, I didn't put that part in here specifically, but I do think it's always good to talk to them about what they get right, the fact that they looked ahead and provided for us into this year. They did, and I would emphasize that to them when we talk.
Mr. Donnelly.
I want to thank Member Holloman for pointing that out. I think that's really important to thank the legislators because of this budget cycle issue that we're faced with, where we have to plan for the next year prior to the legislature completing its budget. I think whether you're, no matter how you feel about spending levels in particular, the timing of these budgets is crucial to school districts all over the state. And even in years when I had Senator Von Imhoff's job as co-chair Senate Finance, where we had $20 a barrel oil, we were managing to do the education budgets early in the legislative session so that it gave certainty to the school districts. And that's one of the points that I've really emphasized in this process, how important that is for everybody involved and how it's just good government and good planning.
So I'd just like to speak on this also. I do support it. I support it for many reasons. One is because I think as a school board, our responsibility is to advocate for our students and to come out and publicly say that, you know, with this kind of proposal, it would be devastating to our students. Also, you know, we talk about, I am thankful to our legislators for what they've done for our budget and how they've advocated for our school district and worked with us. I believe that we work with them every day. But also when I talk about budgets, I always feel, and I hope this is something we can continue to do, and this is a little bit off from the resolution, but I do feel that when we put budgets together or when we vote on a resolution like this, our job, and if you ask any, even if you ask the Governor, Donna Arden came to our Alaska Association of School Boards and it was not a Q and A, it was her telling us how, what were our suggestions to her on how we were going to meet her budget. That's not my job. My job is to advocate for our children, our schools, and to make sure they have what they need to be successful. And does that mean, if that means more funding, then that's what I'm going to advocate for. We've had flat funding for, I don't know, 2010, 2011, and flat funding is a reduction in funding. And we have cut, and we have cut, and then we have cut. And I think it's time, we need to make a statement that we can no longer continue to do this, and this is one way we can do this, by supporting this resolution. If there's no other board discussion, yes, Mr. Donnelly.
And I think the best way to make that case is to show our other elected officials a specific plan for what changes. What are we going to do different than we've done in the past that have led us to not getting to where we want to be with our educational outcomes? I mean, we need to present specific proposals and to convince them that we, of the effacy of those proposals, to turn our educational outcomes around and to do a better job for our students. That's what we can do to convince. I mean, if you're in a position as a policymaker and people just ask for more money, more money, more money, without showing you how it's going to be successful, it's very difficult when you're looking at a $1.6 billion shortfall in funding. That's when we can be effective, is when we can show that case to the other elected officials.
I would like to respond, but in response to our time, I will save that for another time. Thank you. Would any other board member like to make a comment? Okay, student vote, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. Member, board members, please vote.
I move to approve ASD Memorandum 146, the selection of McCool Carlsen Green Architects as the designer of record for the Ursa Major Elementary School Project Analysis Report and that the superintendent enter into a contract with McCool Carlsen Green for professional services in the amount of $274,083 for the purpose of design through concept options development.
Second.
Is there any public testimony on Memorandum 146? Aaron, none? Is there any board discussion or comments? Mr. Donnelly.
I'm going to vote in support of this, but I just wanted to make a comment, and the board's heard me mention this before. I am concerned about the federal law that ties our hands in seeking greater efficiencies in the design process, engineering and design process. It's very unusual to not allow any kind of consideration for the costs involved here. I really do think there's a proper role for considering the expenses involved in this kind of decision-making by an elected body. And we're not allowed to do that under existing federal law, and I find that concerning. But given, given the status of the law, the way it is, I'm certainly going to support this.
Any other board comments or questions? Okay, student vote, please.
Yes.
Members, please vote. And that motion passes, that memorandum passes with seven yays.
I move to approve ASD Memorandum 155, a transfer of fund for math instructional materials in the amount of $884,419.
Second.
Is there any public testimony on Memorandum 155? Seeing none, is there any board discussion? Ms. Vekalas.
I just had a question for the superintendent, or maybe two. Is this the math program or producer of the curriculum that is going out of business? And is this one year curriculum or two?
Thank you. That was a great question through the President to Member Vekalas. And because we possibly could get questions, I've requested Dr. Knudsen from Teaching and Learning to come forward and answer specific questions, and she has specific answers for your questions.
Can you repeat the question again? Sorry.
The GoMath or the producer of the GoMath curriculum, are they, is this the company that is going out of business and is this for one year curriculum or two?
Thank you. Actually, the curriculum isn't going out of print. There's been revisions to it, but this would be for one year only. We had a six-year contract for them, which ran out at the end of this year. Next year is our time for us to do a full review of our elementary math. It's, it doesn't seem like that long ago, but it's been that six-year cycle. So next year, we will be going through that whole process of reviewing how our GoMath is and whether we need to look at other programs. So we'll be pulling a team of teachers and community members and go through that process like we did for reading.
Any other board questions? Okay, Mr. Donnelly.
Is, my understanding is at this point in time, the department recognizes that some of the schools out there, at least three I know of, don't utilize GoMath. Will this funding be available for them for necessary textbook replacement also?
Through the President to Member Donnelly, we have made available funds. They're generally not to replace curriculum. It's usually a set amount for needs because of the economy of scale that we receive for larger purchases. But we have made accommodations and requested input from our schools that do not use the set curriculum when we adopt it. So yes, I'm, that's what Ms. Knudsen does, so, yes. Short answer, yes. Okay, if there's no other discussion, student vote.
Yes.
Members, please vote.
I move to approve ASD Memorandum 162, an authorized cooperative purchasing for the award of a term contract for the district's wired telephone voice services to Alaska Communications Internet LLC. Administration recommends a contract period of July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022 with four additional one-year option periods. The estimated district-wide annual usage each fiscal year would be $1,286,970.15.
Second.
Is there any testimony on Memorandum 162? Seeing none, is there any board discussion? Student vote, please.
Yes.
Board members, please vote.
That doesn't read what the vote is. What's that? What I'm seeing doesn't read what was read.
Oh, it's the wrong one.
This is what it says.
Let's have voice.
Oh, yeah, we do. We do. Yeah. Good call. Thank you. It's also wrong in the memo too, online.
Okay, I'll put calls back into session. And board members, please read the memorandum on your screen to make sure it's correct. And if everyone is okay with that, we will proceed to vote. And thank you, Ms. Vakalis, for pointing that out. And that memorandum passes with seven yays.
I move to approve ASD memorandum 171, and adopt the tentative agreement between the district and the Teamsters Local 959 Warehouse and Maintenance, which will establish terms and conditions of employment for individuals in this unit during the period between July 1, 2017, and June 30, 2020.
Is there any public testimony on this memorandum 171? Turn your mic on. Yeah, your button down at the bottom. There you go.
There we go. I just ran across all of them to tell what came on. Sorry, my name is Dale Miller, I'm business representative, Teamsters Local 959. I represent the employees that are covered by this agreement that you guys are going to be taking a look at. So President Marsette, members of the board, Superintendent Bishop, thanks for the opportunity to come and talk to you guys tonight about this. It's been a long time coming, so we were at it, but I do want to remind the board that we really had most all of this contract settled more than a year ago, so we were just kind of hung up on some language in there that took us a while to iron out, but we finally got there and took our members and it passed by over 80%. So, my phone close on me. I did want to say that this is a responsible, conservative agreement. I want to thank Mr. Holman for very succinctly putting the bit about buying power and purchasing homes and cars and stuff like that. You know, unfortunately, this doesn't increase wages, and that's kind of been the, I guess, the model around the district for a while. When we're talking to those folks down in Juneau, I think that they need to remember that all employees, and not just teachers, face the same kind of problems with being able to purchase things when the wages don't go up. Medical costs are still rising, just the cost of living, and, but I think that the membership recognizes the fiscal responsibilities out there and the fact that the board's having to deal with those, and possibly worse. So, like I say, it was an overwhelming vote to accept this. You know, fortunately or unfortunately, however you want to look at it, we will be back in a short period of time to start this again, but I look forward to it. Maybe having a fresh team at the district will have a much quicker resolution next time around. So, once again, I just would urge the board to adopt this, and this is an aside, and I know this isn't having to do with this, but when starting looking at that, starting school early, might want to consider bus drivers and those food service people that are cooking the meals as well. Not just teachers are going to be affected by it. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any other public testimony on memorandum 171? Hearing none, is there any board discussion? Student vote please.
Yes.
Members please vote. Thank you. Moving on to non-action items, is there any non-action item that members would like to pull? I'd like to pull the one that we added on the rejoining the Coalition of Education Equity. Are there any others? Since I pulled that, I will speak to it. We had belonged to this organization, I don't even know how many years, but many years, and at one time, we decided not to belong to them. And we have been approached again, and just with some of the things that are happening within our state, and some of the advocacy that this group is doing, I thought it was something that we should relook at. Let me pull this up. So, some of the benefits of the membership is, let me get to that, excuse me, just a So their mission is basically, "The Coalition for Education Equity champions a quality, equitable, and adequate public education for every Alaskan child through advocacy, policy development, and legal action." Benefits of membership is, "Membership dues fund our annual operating expenses, including our full-time dedicated staff. It also represents a unified voice of our members, which makes us strong and a powerful advocate. Our membership determines our strategic direction and guides our priorities with focus on ensuring equitable access to quality public education." They are also ones that have filed suit with the governor on the forward funding with the 10 million, I believe, that hasn't been paid as of today, and then the 20 million, and then the addition to, sorry. So they have filed suit on those individuals on behalf of the school districts to, for the governor to pay those. I think what, so my, I'm not going to read this, what my concern with this is, we're getting to a point where, you know, the governor has proposed this 25% budget cut. I know that we're working with the legislators and such, but we're also getting to a point where we, I question whether we're being afforded our constitutional amendment of adequate funding. And if we were to go forward with anything as a school district, we would have to look at a coalition or somebody to help us with this type of advocacy if we wanted to move forward. The other thing is, Alaska looks at us as the leader in education. Many times, most school districts, when I go to the Alaska Association of School Boards, we, people look to see what Anchorage is doing first. We are the leader in education, and I think when we have a coalition, that's an Alaskan Coalition for Education Equity, I think it says a lot when we are members of that and support our state. Is there any other comments from board members? Ms. Hilding.
Thank you. And I'll just clarify, I voted against it during the agenda process because I thought we, it was just an error of it not being on there, but I thought we were going to have notice for public discussion, and I just want to support that process. But just to, everybody on this board knew that this was going to be a non-action item, just not our public did.
Correct.
So that was my, and just to clarify, our constitution doesn't say adequate funding. It just says, "To establish and maintain a system of public schools open to all children," which is a wonderful thing. I love that it's in our constitution, we just need to be precise. That's just a side note. But I will say that I strongly oppose litigation unless it's an absolute last resort. We have a legislative process, I support that process. I know how destructive the litigation can be. My focus on this board is improving how we talk about education, not just today, but in five years and in 10 years, and crafting, I've experienced what it can be. I grew up in a community where teachers, everybody valued teachers. I know what it looks like, and I know where we can go, and litigation isn't going to get us there. So that said, I wouldn't be interested in joining if litigation was the goal. I don't know the cost of it or anything like that either.
It's $32,000 annually, and again, it's not just litigation. That's my thoughts on this, is that I've seen, what I see with what's happening to our education and funding, and not being given the funds that we have been promised, and we still don't know if that's going to happen, you know, what are our other alternatives? But it's also being the leader in Alaska in education, and belonging to an organization that is there for the benefit of our schools. Ms. Hilding, I mean, Ms. Vakalis.
Not having a memo to read with any more information behind it, I'm just going to throw, I guess, a couple of my thoughts. We are currently members of the Council of Greater City Schools, as well as the AASB. We do get a bunch of our legislative updates from the Alaska Education Update, and I'm remiss in not knowing what their annual cost is. Tonight, we've done a lot of conversation, as we will continue to do, on how we spend our dollars outside of the classroom, and looking at another potential cost of something that I'm concerned with, it kind of mirrors a little bit of what AASB does, the statewide representation of education, and it does list on their website that NEA Alaska, AASB, and the Alaska Council of School Administrators are all part of this organization. I want to make sure it's not a redundant spending of dollars if we are already getting these services and advocacy in other ways, and we will continue to face the challenges, the same with AASB, of urban education versus rural education, and how that gets split out, and how those conversations get had will be an interesting path. So I just want to be mindful of the cost of this, and how it may overlap with services that we already have. But I, and like I said, without having seen the memo, those are just my thoughts coming into this from 20,000 feet.
Mr. Donnelly.
So the last I knew, none of the other five largest school districts were members of this organization. Are any of them now members of this organization?
Through the president to member Donnelly, I, earlier in the meeting, sent an email to everyone sharing the cost as well as the membership. It's right on their website. I just, Janet assisted in copying it and forwarding it to you, so I could get it, I can share. None of the big five know, and I can, the districts are listed.
And so to give a sense of what our contribution would be at 32,000, what's the next largest district's contribution to this organization?
Through the president, I'm not sure that that's on the website, each district's cost, but it is per pupil, so to your point, it would, there would be a difference, a delta. ASD is, of course, the largest.
I think what I'm anticipating is there's a huge delta here, that we'd be spending four, or five, six, seven times as much as other districts on this, and because almost all the other districts are very small districts, there would be a disparity of interest involved in the goals of the organization that, wherein, following member Vakalis's point, wouldn't exist in a statewide organization that we currently belong to, the Alaska Association of School Boards. Much more diversity of interest, urban, rural, large, small, geographical, than there would be with membership in this particular organization.
Any other comments, Ms. Donnelly?
Two questions. Well, first a question and then a comment. So, we used to be a member, do we have the history as to why we dropped out? Or let this, let it go?
Through the president, I can share, I initially, when I initially started in July, we had a bill to re-enter, and I brought it to the board at that time to ask if the board would like to re-join, because at the time, the school board was having a discussion about AASB, the cost and other costs, similar to now, and at the time, the discussion of the board at the time was that there were alternate engagements, and that it was similar work to something they've done. So I think the board went through each organization and just determined, you know, why, but I know the impetus for, when I've talked to Carol, because at the time, I was in a different district, and it was a different name as well. It wasn't called Equity, it was, was it CERC?
It was something different. It's been, because it's been around a while.
CAC? Yeah, CAC. It was CAC, and they did prevail in the Casili case, which was a rural Alaskan capital lawsuit to bring equity to capital as large school districts can bond. So they have had success, this group, and Carol joined it to really bridge the gap between rural and urban, knowing that Anchorage is large and wanted to remain, and this is Carol Cuomo, this superintendent at the time, she, I had a personal discussion with her because other districts were considering it as well, and it was imperative to, you know, keep rural, urban connected, and this was a statement that the board that she was on had made at that time, and I believe, really finances to the discussion prior to this was probably the biggest impetus from the board moving away from that two years ago.
Okay. So, you know, Council of Greater City Schools is a wonderful resource. I mean, I can remember, I can recall, you know, the value that it brought to the district, and the resources that it brought to the district. But I see the council as different than this organization, which focuses on Alaska issues, not just the rural and the urban, you know, but the needs of Alaska Native children throughout the state, and they are not just in the, you know, the rural areas. So it just, I was surprised that we weren't a member. I mean, as a newbie, I'm a newbie, I'm a newbie on the board, and I don't have all the background. But it seems to me that if we are looking at this through a lens of equity, I think our question should be, how do we do it, as opposed to not doing it at all? I mean, I don't know what the, all the details about the finances, but I do know that what this organization does in terms of its advocacy is helps all of us really look at equity through a different lens. And so at some point, we're going to have, I would like to have, for the board to have a discussion about what equity is and what it's not, because I think if we understood that, we would, we would put our money, our resource in this organization.
Mr. Donnelly.
Thank you, Madam President. I think if we were looking at equity, the Casili case is not that. I mean, it clearly discriminates against the poorest citizens in Anchorage, because even the poorest individuals in Anchorage, the ones that need the help the most, still have to pay property taxes indirectly or directly, and so they're contributing to the cost of school construction through those property taxes, where the Casili case means that if you're, even if you're a millionaire, but you happen to live in a different region of the state where they don't have any local taxes, you don't have to pay a penny towards construction of schools where you live, but the poorest people in Anchorage through rent have to pay for the construction of schools in Anchorage, and I don't think that's equitable at all. schools in Anchorage, and I don't think that's equitable at all.
Mrs. Bellamy, did you?
Just, Member Donnelly, that was not the definition of equity that I was referring to, which is why I would like for us to have a conversation, and I don't know that this is the time to have it. It is much more than that, but I tell you, your point is well taken.
Well, it was something I wanted to bring up. I will be forwarding to members information that I've received on the coalition, and it will be on our action items at our next meeting. In a memo, right, yeah. Yes?
Dina.
Oh, Dina, sorry.
That's okay. So I, I think that maybe we should table this until the next meeting, so we can share a little more information, but based on what I know of the organization and what they've done, I would support rejoining it, but I think it merits additional information. I know that they have been very supportive and have helped provide funding for, support that created the funding for pre-K statewide. I know that, as you mentioned, they really have pushed on getting the $20 million that was legislated last year for the fiscal '19 budget for schools throughout the state. They have filed, they're the ones who are pushing for that to be released, and we have not seen a penny of that money yet, and we're approaching the end of our fiscal year. So I think they do serve a function, but I think it would be good to maybe have a, can we table this until the next meeting? I'm not sure exactly what the process would be.
Well, we, I think at this point, what I wanted to do, if possible, is to keep this an action item, because it's our last board meeting until August. It's not action now, so.
Right, then I think we'll just have to have a longer discussion at the next meeting than it is an action item. Maybe we can.
And I'll, we'll provide more information out to board members in the memo also.
What we'd originally discussed in the agenda planning was having a, sorry, originally suggested a work session to talk about it, talk about what Dr. Bellamy has suggested, what is equity, what is the value, what does this look like? I'll just continue to say, I encourage our board to proceed in methodical, well-planned-out processes that we consider things duly before we vote on them, that we don't just have this today, and in two weeks, we vote on it. I don't think that's in the best interest. Whether it passes or not, it doesn't make it a well-thought or well-considered decision, and that is what I hope we will strive for this coming year. So I, I would like it to go to, table it as Dr., or Ms. Mitchell's, put it on a work session, as we'd originally considered.
With that idea?
Ms. Mitchell?
I would support that idea, so maybe, should we make a motion, offering that is, is that appropriate?
One moment. Mr. Hallman?
Kind of a point of order, it's a non-action item, so I don't know if you can table a non-action item. When we're back here in two weeks, we can dispose of it in any number of ways, and I would, or just to do that, move the agenda.
Okay. Any other, yes?
But if there's something we want to do with it, that we can do it now, and say, I mean, it doesn't have to come up to the agenda, and then have people come and testify if we're just going to bump it off to something else, I think now.
Well, I don't think we know that we're going to bump it off to something else.
I didn't know what the discussion was, but if that's what we're going to do, we should do it now.
Well, I think because it's a non-action item, I don't know that there's, I mean, I, I don't think this deserves a committee just to decide if we're going to join this coalition or not. I think it's a simple yes or no, based on the information you get on the committee and what benefit it provides to ASD. So I'll be happy to share that information with board members in a memo, and at our next meeting, if it's deemed that this is something that is not, or wants, or it needs to be postponed, or not voted on, or voted down, or whatever, that will be the will of the board at the next board meeting. New business, do we have any new business? I do have one thing I want to say that I, we were remiss in not saying, is that we have changed our school board meetings, starting next school year, beginning in August, our school board meetings will be on Tuesday. We didn't announce that at the last school board meeting, and I want to make sure that everyone was aware of that and put it on public record. Does anyone else have any other new business? Ms. Hildy?
Thank you, and I would have preferred to just bring it up casually in a work session, but we're out of work sessions.
Yeah.
But we had talked about the need for smaller class sizes in K through three, and the need to communicate with their legislatures the benefit of that. I can't say legislatures, I don't know how to say it, I'm sorry. I don't, I would like the board to consider whether we can, we have the good research to support it, but we can show here in Anchorage, in one or two classes, or what, like perhaps one school and two comparisons, what happens if we have K through three in one school, where it's a smaller class size, and then be able to compare it to a similar school? That would be a funding element, it would be adding additional teachers either to one school, I mean, there could be a couple different ways of doing it, but I would like our board to consider whether we can demonstrate how, how it plays out right here in Anchorage. We have good research, but what if, you know, we have three schools that didn't, they got a mark at the state level, right? So if you had one of those, and you said, "We're going to do K through three at the right class size for this, for this year, and compare it," and then we have some evidence to say, "Here's what happens," whether it's anecdotal on classroom disruptions, or test scores, or just whatever we choose as the metric, but not keep waiting. If we know there's something that works, then we should see how it works in Anchorage, and have that to support the research behind it.
Let me ask Dr. Bishop a question first. In some of our schools, I know that principals have chosen to do that already, is that true, based to have smaller class sizes in the K through three, which increase class sizes in our other grades?
Well, certainly, our metric calls for that, so our metric at kindergarten is lower than our metric at sixth grade, per se. In addition, when you're faced with a larger elementary class size, and a larger, or primary, and a larger elementary intermediate, I say hands down, 100% of the principals put the staffing at the lower level, and they've also done that in title schools. Having a plan, I like what Member Hildy did say, however, it's kind of tricky, because interestingly enough, one of our schools that did receive, that is a focus school, TSI school, or a CSI school, I'll have to remember, but I think it's the, one of the four of the, it actually had higher overall test scores, but one student group that had 13 kids in it, didn't meet the mark of that TSI. You know, it's kind of a numbers tricky thing, so interestingly enough, for many, many student groups, they were higher than half of our school, they were, it was kind of a midtown school, higher than some of our higher socioeconomic south schools, that actually scored in reading higher, so it's, it's just tricky to look at that, so we'd really have to take a broad-based look, but the general intent of small class sizes produce better learning, less off-task behavior, more time to do the things and the experiences that we want kids, holds true, evidence-based, so we can continue to do that, just look at, I'm just not sure that the TSI, non-TSI is actually, looking at a broader sense might, might help us be able to really provide evidence to that.
Mr. Donnelly?
Yeah, in addition to class size, I really believe that the answer to readings right in front of us was Spalding reading. I mean, I think we should do, be experimenting more with that also. We have three schools that are utilizing that now, and they're doing phenomenal, and they have been doing phenomenal for years. And the new curriculum is a step in that direction, of a more strongly phonics-based curriculum, but I think that we should be, if we're going to experiment with class size, I think some of these proven curriculums that are out there, really merit experimentation also.
Is there any other board comments? Yes?
I appreciate the intent of highlighting a couple of smaller classes and seeing how they do, but, you know, setting up research that really is reliable, it would be difficult to do that and really be able to have clear results, because, you know, it depends on the students who are in the class, it depends on how, how they mesh together, it depends on how many kids are coming in and out in the year, to have a control group against a test group. I think there's so much national peer-reviewed research that is out there that, that shows that class size does matter, I'm not sure that having anecdotal information, if we found that it didn't make a difference, I don't know if that would really be indicative that, well, then we don't need to have smaller classes, and conversely, if we found that it did make a difference, it could be that, you know, the class next door, if they had had a smaller class size, it wouldn't have made a difference. So I think doing that with the intent of moving to the district as a whole, that this is the direction we should go, we probably can't structure it in the right way to really make it be valid, statistically reliable results, and something like that.
Ms. Hildy?
And just to clarify, I agree with Member Mitchell, it would not be something that you could hold up as a result base, but saying, "Here's what it looks like, here's what, here's what it feels like, here's what parents respond to, here's what your constituents think about it," and whether they want that for constituents in their own district. So it's just something I would like us to consider. When we say we have something that we know is good for students, I don't want to keep waiting, right? If we know it's something we can start implementing in a small way and build on those successes, then I hope we'll look for those opportunities.
I think that'll be a great topic for our retreat. Look forward to having some of those discussions. Is there any other new business? Okay, this is the last opportunity for public testimony, if there's anyone that would like to testify on something other than what we've already discussed. Any school board comments, or from administration? Mr. Hallman?
Like everyone, I've been at graduations, and it's a pretty fantastic time of the year to be out and see what happens. I did want to touch back on Member Donnelly's comment, because I think it's a real important thing when we are talking to legislators, or members in the public, you definitely can't have too many people that don't work in the classroom. And you kind of have to look at what they're actually doing, and whether or not it makes an impact. I thought one time, quite a few years ago, when they cut a lot of library aides, I was talking with a librarian, and I said, "You know, it seems like a pretty painless cut, that the library aide, or assistant librarian, isn't necessarily that central to the operation of the library." And she said, "Well, basically, it means I become the assistant librarian. The librarian begins to shell books, and repair backbones, and make labels, and do things like that, and you lose the service of a professional librarian actually interacting with kids, that knows a wider range of books, and different things like that." In the same way, for teachers in the classroom, if you have fewer security staff to respond to a call, if you don't have ISS every day, that you can remove a student who's inhibiting the progress of everybody in the room, the teacher becomes the person that has to go one-on-one with that kid for an indeterminate number of minutes, hoping the class kind of finds their own way as they do it. So you can have outside-of-classroom staff that aren't really assisting very much. I don't think we're, I don't think we have that now. I think we passed that point sometime back, if we were ever there, and if we were to say remove an assistant principal, then I think you would see, if you could actually get the numbers on it, and you can't, but if you could, you would see teachers having to deal with discipline issues longer in their class period. You would see, cut the number of janitors, you increase the amount of time teachers spend cleaning their room. I mean, it's, and they, some of them will do it outside of class, some of them have to do it inside of class, and sometimes you can incorporate kids into that, doesn't necessarily do them any harm, doesn't really help them learn algebra either. But I just want to say that if we continue to cut as we have, that it does have an impact on how much instructional time, quality instructional time, that our teachers have to work with kids. If we had four or five assistant principals in our high schools, and two or three assistant principals in our middle schools, and an assistant principal in every elementary school, we could probably make some cuts, and it wouldn't really have too much impact. I don't think we have those numbers anywhere. We've shaved down security staff, we've shaved down office staff, and on a really bad day, every one of those people winds up working with kids. Fortunately, it doesn't happen every day, but I've had the experience of walking through the middle school office, and the nurse is talking to a kid, and the registrar is talking to a kid, and every counselor is talking to a kid, and every security staff is talking to a kid, and the assistant principal is talking to a kid, and there's a parent and, or a couple of parents and kids in the principal's office, and one of the people at the front desk is talking to a kid too. And it happens, when, when some of those people aren't there, you either have, the kid either has to stay in the classroom, or if it's bad enough, you just have to bump them out of school and make them go home. And neither of those is desirable if we're trying to get somewhere. I think it's a message that we, we have to make certain, if we're not getting value from them, we need to cut them, and we need to cut them whether we're under a tight budget or a generous budget. But the reality is, I think any position you cut at this point, if that person's doing a good job, the students suffer, and teachers suffer, the classroom quality suffers. I think we edged into that years ago, unfortunately.
Ms. Vakalis?
I just want to say thank you to all of the teachers and staff, which are far too many for me to name with my three children, that have made a very positive impact in my children's life over the last nine months, and for all the other kids in the district as well, and so for anybody who's listening, just a very, very heartfelt thank you. I hope everybody enjoys their last two days. I hear that there are a lot of fun things happening, you know, still in the district, and just really excited for everybody. I hope everybody has a fantastic summer. I know that I will miss all of the teachers and the staff over the summer while I have my children, and I look forward to seeing everybody back in the fall.
Thank you. All right, well, on that, thank you, Ms. Vakalis, we are adjourned.